I am going to call this meeting to order at 6:02. We're already running late, two minutes. Can everybody please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, thank you. Moving on, we don't have any adjustments and we do have approval of minutes. We have Monday, October 7th, 2024, executive session at 4:00 PM. Monday, October 7th, executive session at 5:00 PM. October 7th, executive session at 5:30 PM. October 7th, regular meeting at 6:00 PM. We have October 16th, 2024, which was a Monday, executive session at 8:00 AM. Monday, November 4th, 2024, executive session at 5:00 PM. Monday, November 4th, regular meeting at 6:00 PM. And Monday, November 18th, 2024, workshop at, whoops, excuse me, 4:00 PM. Recommendation, approve the minutes as presented.
I make the recommendation.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor? All in favor. Public comments, I know we have Zachary Hoffman that would like to speak. You want to? Yes. Be careful because you have a long microphone, just like me. Just press the push and the little green light will come on.
Hello, everyone. I'm Zachary Hoffman. I wanted to come here and talk about Officer Goldsmith, who is our current School Resource Officer. Essentially, if you don't know, he's being transferred from the School Resource Officer position over to the Patrol coming this January, so pretty soon, which is kind of mid-school year. So I just prepared a brief statement, if I can just go ahead with that. So, good evening, my name is Zachary Hoffman. I'm a senior at Sanford High School. First and foremost, I wanted to give you guys, or I wanted to thank you guys for the opportunity to speak and for all those in attendance. I speak on behalf of the nearly 600 people who signed the online petition within four days to suspend the immediate transfer of Officer Goldsmith to Patrol, our current School Resource Officer. Among those 600, parents who have had interactions with him, teachers who have worked alongside him as colleagues, and lastly, the student body. Kids who have known Goldsmith for their entire high school career and some longer due to his presence in our community. Removing him in such an abrupt manner would take away such a prominent figure in our community. He motivates all of us to be the best version of ourselves. In fact, I would say he's part of the reason why I'm able to come up here and speak to you all today. During his tenure, excuse me, as SRO, Officer Goldsmith impacted students' lives for the better. Honestly, in one school board meeting, I could not properly do his character justice. To you all, he's an officer, but to the 600 people who signed the online petition, he's so much more than that. He's a mentor, he's a friend, and he's family. Of course, this is not to say that another officer could not do the same, but ultimately, his impacts and his actions were not an overnight occurrence. His relationship with the student body is not something that can be replaced by a new officer, at least not in such an abrupt manner. To backtrack to the online petition, I wanted to read a few powerful quotes by the people who were so impacted with the interactions with him. The first one says, "Officer Goldsmith makes a change in every student's life constantly. He has a bond with the students that is hard to build. I am where I am in my life because of this man." Another one reads, "Officer Goldsmith has helped me get through freshman year, and I am now a junior, and I can talk to him about things whenever I need to. He has made many bonds with students that can't be replaced by any other officer. He is loved by so many students." And lastly, "I'm an SRO of a school district in New Hampshire. I've learned so much from Officer Goldsmith, helping me establish myself in my schools. He is not only a role model for his students, but also other police officers. I'm sad that he's been transferred. It's such a loss for the regional high school community." On behalf of the group who initially organized the petition, which I was in, as the student body and staff, as well as the student body and staff, would love to emphasize our grief over losing Officer Goldsmith. While we have made it clear that he has nothing to do with this, one of the many lessons he will teach any one of his students is that we should always fight for what we believe in. We've ensured that we would remain civil, which we have, and it was important to us, but it was important to us that we come out here tonight to ensure that we have also been hurt. The school community came together for a movement that we strongly believe in. At the minimum, we've asked that Officer Goldsmith remain the SRO until the end of the 2025 school year, but to this point, our efforts have been to no avail. Of course, the change was done by the Police Department, but the bottom line is that we strongly encourage and can only hope that each one of you will take your actions into account before making such an abrupt change and an impactful change in the future. Thank you, that was all.
Are you okay leaving that with us? Statement with that?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Sarah, did we have anybody online?
Okay, thank you. Oh, I didn't see that. Yes.
Just moving along to F Communications, I do want to just, we did acknowledge a letter that we all received in the mail regarding the caffeine at the high school. We all received it, we all, and I'm apologizing that I don't have it in front of me. It's right on my table to bring tonight to thank the person that wrote it to us, unless you know who the name is. Yeah, it's, I apologize, we received it weeks ago, so thank you so much for whoever wrote that and duly noted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, no communications, and then committee reports.
Zach, usually, just so you know, for public comment, we listen. That's usually what happens with public comments. Not a time to respond with that. So I just wanted to make sure you were clear about that, that we're, it is awkward, for sure, but I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that as we look at it. Okay, some committee reports. Since the last time we met, the Special Education Advisory Committee did meet on Wednesday, November 13th. This was a meeting where we invited Megan Walter and Sandy Flack from the Maine Department of Education. They were joined by Jennifer Hopkins from Child Developmental Services, and they gave the Advisory Committee a presentation on the impending transition of child find and faith responsibilities for three- and four-year-olds to school districts. This is something that the legislature approved last year, that it's going to have to be, the deadline for that to happen is September 2028. And so the Maine Department of Education is transitioning that for school districts that are interested. And so the Special Ed Advisory Committee is doing our due diligence. They are planning to have a second cohort. This would be for the 2025-2026 school year. And so as a committee, we're looking into that. And so we were able to have the DOE representatives from CDS on Zoom with that. We had a few technical difficulties that were able, Snags over at Community Adult Education, but they were able to come back to help us provide information for that. Our next Special Education Advisory Committee meeting will be on January 8th, after the holidays, as we will continue to focus on this issue, as well as looking at the other end of the spectrum, where school departments are also now responsible for 18- to 22-year-olds as well. And so those are priorities that we identified for our Advisory Committee to really look into, and that's going to be helpful for us as we especially go into the budget process for that.
I'll just add to that as one of the members of the Special Advisory Council, as well as Melissa. We were both in attendance, excuse me. I will just say that we were definitely advocating for this basically mandate that's coming from the state that, you know, about funding, and that we acknowledge that this is going to be a huge undertaking for every district, in particular, our large district. And in that, you know, funding is obviously going to be huge because, you know, this is not something that we can add on to the plates of our already busy Special Ed Department that we're really going to need, in my opinion, someone hired for this job because of the complexity of it, especially starting it out. So we definitely asked very difficult questions to the Department of Ed that attended the meeting, and will continue to do so before we, I guess, give our blessing to take that on.
Well said, thank you, Amy. Policy Committee also met this month. You're going to see results of that meeting later on in the agenda when we get to policies for that. The Curriculum Committee also met. You're going to hear that through Beth Lambert's Director's Report later in the meeting. Safety Committee as well also met. Steve Busier will give an update for that later as well. The SRTC Advisory Committee had a meeting on Friday, November 22nd with the group director, Matt Peterman, gave an update. SRTC's been very busy. They had their administrators' counselors' breakfast back on November 21st. That is something that they always do in advance of their admissions process to bring the school counselors and administrators in about that. So they shared the admissions calendar as SRTC gets ready to go to all of the sending schools to do their presentations to sophomores. They also talked about, Matt Peterman has also been very active in advocating for certification at the department, Maine Department of Education level, Chapter 115. They're taking feedback for that. Matt went to advocate the challenges that SRTC has in hiring usually people coming from industry. And so looking for some more flexibility around those certifications. We also talked about the regional calendar. We started to look ahead to the 2025-2026 school calendar. As you know, all of our sending schools have to get together, and we cannot have any more than five dissimilar days. So that work has already begun. Looking, and we're optimistic that that is going to be able to be accomplished for that. Matt has also been doing some work about the amount of time that each trade gets and trying to make sure that they're meeting the certification requirements that we have in the schedule. So he's done a really nice job of looking into researching what other CTE centers are doing throughout the state, and also looking at our current schedule to see if there's ways that we can just carve out a few more minutes in working with the sending schools. So I want to commend Matt for doing that. It was just some tweaks to the schedule currently that I think we can do without having really major any impacts at all. Matt also has been working, the SRTC's been working on, LD 436 was a law that was passed that was helping people who attend SRTC get integrated credits for that, rather than just being elective credits. Sometimes that can be a real barrier for our people to attend. And so Matt's been doing a lot of work in terms of presenting that work to also the counselors and the administrators who came to be able to move that work forward, to do that. Also, we're looking at a survey to send out to students, younger students throughout the district to see if there's going to be any other offerings that people would be interested in that we're not currently offering for that. We did have a meeting scheduled for, in December, on the 20th. That usually bookends another meeting with the York County Superintendent. Since a number of people attend both meetings, we try to bookend those meetings. But that meeting has been moved out of Sanford High School and Sanford Regional Technical Center to Bitterford Center of Technology for this particular meeting. So we are going to then turn around, and instead of meeting on December 20th, we're going to meet on January 31st. That time will actually work better because that's, we're anticipating the EPS funding formula will be there, and that's going to be the focus of that meeting. Will be helping all of our schools in terms of their budget preparation, in terms of looking at the capital budget. So that was the SRTC Advisory Committee meeting on November 22nd. Okay, and then we also, the Sanford Performing Arts Center also had their meeting. We ran up against a conflict with the Special Ed Advisory Committee meeting, which happens, but Melissa does have an update on the Sanford Performing Arts Center.
Yeah, so the 24-25 season is in full swing. The Spotlight Series actually was kicked off on November 9th with the big band Fat Cat Swingers. They had a little pre-show, you know, ensemble before that, and it went really well. And it earns high marks for its audience, and it kicked off the season with great style. We are grateful to new and returning corporate sponsors for the season. So, you know, there's a lot of financial support needed to get the Sanford Performing Arts Center to be what it is, which is really one of the classiest joints in town, in my opinion. So Partners Bank, Nassau Healthcare, the Mapes Family, Warren's Office Supply, Century 21 Northeast, Samia Realty Group, Patco Construction, Sanford Sound, and Mark Motors are, you know, our big corporate sponsors, and we definitely have to give them a shout out and thank them for all their support. Upgrades to our stage lighting systems are in progress. They are doing this over a period of time, and Jeff really takes some pride in what we've got going on there. It is one of the reasons we are able to get some of the renowned shows that we have in place because, you know, they require some fancy lighting. So, you know, that's up and running. We are in the throes of our busy holiday concert performance season right now. So Holiday Pops Performance by the Stratford Wind Symphony was Saturday, the 30th. This Saturday, December 7th, we welcome the Portland Ballet and their stunning production of The Nutcracker for two performances. They actually start here, so that's pretty incredible that we get them down here for that. And there's a local student, ooh, excellent. A four, oh, excellent. So on December 14th, the U.S. Air Force Heritage of America Band presents a sold-out holiday concert. And on New Year's Eve, world-famous musician and illusionist Mike Super comes to our stage to help us ring in 2025. So that's pretty awesome, the Air Force Band and everybody coming for that as well. Upcoming school holiday concerts include the Sanford Middle School on Wednesday, December 11th, Sanford High School on December 12th, and St. Thomas School on December 18th. And then Sanford High School Theater Company presented 12 Angry Jurors two weeks ago, and the auditions for the Spring Musical, Grease, are on December 13th. So very busy and happening place right there, Sanford Performing Arts Center.
Sure is. I was able to see the 12 Angry Jurors, direction of kids, and it was outstanding in terms of that performance and their acting and the whole thing. Just continues to be so impressive. All right, those are committee reports. If it's okay, I can move into the Superintendent's report. I do want to take a few minutes, since this is our last business meeting of 2024. Our second meeting in December is going to be a workshop focused on school counseling, social work, and outreach, as well as some policies around Section C. But since this is our last official business meeting, I do want to recognize a couple of our school committee members who are moving on. And try not to do this in a way of bringing up to the podium or embarrassing anybody. But I do think it's really important that we do recognize both Emily and Jen. Jen is out of state and unable to be here this time. But I know, as everyone does, it's a huge commitment to belong to the school committee. We reached out to Emily to help us in terms of coming on board in, back in January of 2024, which was not easy to do. And we were very fortunate to have Emily come on board with her experience, especially being thrown right into the budget season and the challenges of doing that. And so I know on behalf of the whole school committee, school committee, as well as all of our stakeholders along that, that we're very grateful and appreciative of the work that both Emily and Jen did. There's a lot of commitment here, there's a lot of meetings, a lot of work. And I know that both Jen and Emily always do things with Sanford students first and foremost in mind, as well as our staff and our community, to be able to do that with all of the decisions for that. We have a certificate of appreciation and recognition of your dedicated service and unwavering commitment to educational excellence. As a Sanford School Department School Committee member, we extend our deepest appreciation for your invaluable contributions to our school district and the countless students whose lives you have impacted with that. And we got a little gift card to help you down at the Landscape and Horticulture Program down at SRTC, which I think will be helpful with that. But Emily, on behalf of the school committee with that, we won't get you up to the podium, and we'll be able to also pass Jen's as well as her term is coming to end.
Thank you so much. It's been a pleasure, and I know that you guys are getting two really good candidates on the school committee. John is here tonight, so I'm super happy to see John in the audience. It's, I think this is great that he attends and gets himself familiar to what the process is. So, but I will always be watching, and I will be, I will be sending emails come budget season. But thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you.
I'll just add, Emily, we really appreciate it, especially with your history of being on the school committee years before that was super helpful, I would say to all of us. But, you know, we look to you as our senior member because it was many, you know, to think that we're the senior people here is kind of crazy. So thank you so much for everything you taught us, and we appreciate you. Thank you.
I just have to say, I've told you this already, but I want to say publicly that I so appreciate you being here. We're going to miss your humor and your insight and just your experience and your expertise in so many areas and so many things that we have to do. And I'm just really going to miss you. Good.
You said that.
Nothing confident, but I'm just a phone call away. Now watch yourself on Facebook, please, in the sense of the happening. No.
All right, we'll turn it over to our student representatives. Zach was unable to attend tonight. I think he's got a driver's ed, family orientation commitment, which we all know. Those can't be missed. Those can't be missed, so we'll turn it over to Matt and Elsie if they can. Sarah, if you want to bring up the latest edition, Sanford Spotlight. Take it away.
All right, before we get into that, I just wanted to comment on the Officer Goldsmith situation. I personally don't know him super well, but I do have a Ms. Warner, and Ms. Warner provides a safe space for me. She makes it easier for me to come to school. I know that I can go to her when I need something. And I know that if she wasn't there, I would feel a lot less like, okay, going to school, a lot more anxious. And I think that he provides that for a lot of kids, and I don't know what I would do if she was getting taken away. So I can empathize with that, and I think that's really important to consider how many kids he even helps just get out of bed and come to school and feel comfortable going to class and things like that.
Can I just say, I appreciate that comment. Thank you for speaking up.
So to start off, NHS had its induction ceremony on Tuesday, November 19th. I think we inducted around 60 new members.
Which you were one of with that, Matt, so we want to make sure we give you your props. Congratulations.
Thank you. Sanford Pride has a new student mentor program. It's pairing adults in the community with third-grade students. Several SMS students attended a leadership summit at Thomas College. At Margaret Chase Smith, students participated in a regulated classroom activity. At Carl J. Lamb, Ms. Saruman brought lamb time to life in classrooms. That's learning at my best. At Sanford Middle School, they recently had a red ribbon week, which is pretty much a vaping and drug prevention program. And Sanford Pride had a turkey trot fundraiser.
Sanford High School, we had an arts recognition night last Monday, which was induction for NAHs and Triumph, which was super awesome.
Which you had a major part in as well. If we were going to give Matt his props, we have to give Elsie her props as well.
Might be the president.
Very well done, yeah. You might be, you might be the president, yeah.
For those of you that haven't seen Elsie's art, she's amazing.
Thank you. Heather Hastings wins band competition award at Margaret Chase Smith Elementary School's music teacher. Heather Hastings has been named winner of the prestigious Woman Band Directors Commission competition. Sanford High School hosts, oh, you're going to go over that, right?
Yep, cover that one.
All right. From the Spartan Times, in Sanford, Maine, on November 14th, seven peer helpers and their buddies walked from SHS to Bowlarama. Local author visits Sanford Community Adult Education. Sanford Community Adult Education recently hosted a community event featuring local author Ashley Ridlin. You're going over that too as well, right?
Yep.
All right. And then, as usual, how to download the app. Follow us on the Sanford School Department app to stay in the know about what's going on in Sanford and Sanford School Department. And attendance matters, a reminder as always. Thank you for your commitment to your child's regular school attendance. Community announcements. Are you looking to share your organization's events and activities with the Sanford School community? The Sanford School Department website offers a community announcements page to help you reach students, families, and staff members. The community resource guide is linked below. The times for the free breakfast are posted per school below. And if you need help for holiday assistance, there's a link down there as well.
This week's employee spotlight featured Sanford Pride Elementary Teacher Tricia Bovin. Her favorite TV show is Ted Lasso. This week's alumni spotlight featured 2011 graduate Daniel Norwood. As always, attached are links to stay current with the Sanford community. And this edition of the Main Street Memo includes Have a Seat at the Performing Arts Center, Sanford Parks and Recreation Fall and Winter Activities, and the YMCA Tracton Center Annual Holiday Fair.
Elsie, Matt, thank you. Excellent job, well done. There are a couple stories in there I'm going to talk about in my report momentarily. Want to also, there's a field trip that has happened since our last regular meeting at the beginning of November, business meeting. Jazz All-State Festival took place for 12th graders at Camden Hills Regional High School in Camden, Maine, November 16th, 17th, and 18th with that. I don't know about anyone else, but I did feel that today was a lot colder than usual and that we've seen that weather change. And with that weather change, we want to also make sure as an opportunity to review some of our weather procedures with that. Remember, if there is school, an impact to the school day, whether that is a delay or school being canceled or in some situations being dismissed early, we'll send our message out through our website and our app. So we want to make sure that people's contact info on Infinite Campus is accurate so that they can receive these notices about that. You can also reach out to Central Office if you need help with that to be able to get that, to get that set up with that. We always try to, when it comes to delays, cancellations, and early release, we do our best to try to make those calls as early as we can. We shoot for a time usually around 5:30 AM. We don't always able to land on that, but that's what we shoot for. We also will post delays, cancellations, and early release on the following media outlets, our TV stations of the ABC affiliate, NBC affiliate, and CBS affiliate. That was the way we used to always learn about it, was whether or not you get up and watch the scrolling on the TV of looking at that. Just a reminder that when school is canceled or students are released early, all of our school buildings will be closed for activities. That includes sports and practices. There are those circumstances sometimes where there might be some extenuating circumstances in doing that, that we might make some adjustments with just on terms of the weather. Obviously, safety is always going to be what guides our decisions with that. We also will try to do our best not to dismiss early. We know that that's a huge impact on families to be able to look at that, so that's something that we will. When I say "we," that's the school department at the end. It's a call that I work with in terms of talking with a meteorologist that we contract with, working with the city, working with our Public Works Department, working with the Police Department. And we also work as all the sending schools to SRTC to be able to look at making those decisions with it. Sometimes we will delay. There may be a one-hour delay or a two-hour delay, and that's often usually when the weather is improved. But sometimes it means us getting our facility ready in terms of some of the plowing and shoveling that has to take care of. plowing and shoveling that has to take care of with that. So if it is a one-hour delay, everything just gets moved back one hour. If it's a two-hour delay, everything will get back, move back to two hours with that. And then, we do have early release Wednesdays and if there is a Wednesday, we've always stayed consistent to continue with that early release. We found that our families had already made those arrangements ahead of time and to be able to kind of mess around with that is challenging and problematic. So, if you do have a delay on a early release Wednesday, the early release will stay there. If there is an early dismissal necessary, we will always try to make those notifications by 12 noon in terms of that, with that. And as always, these are not always, these decisions, sometimes people can maybe disagree with some of the decisions that come back and families always have the ability to, regarding their child's safety, if they want to be able to keep their child home and feeling it's too safety. But these are the same procedures that we've used in the past to be able to do that, will continue to use it for it. I do think there's some snow in the forecast, just, so I think it's timely in terms of how we're going to be able to manage that with it. And then I do also want to talk about the Second Annual York County Legislative Summit that was held recently on Thursday, November 14th. That brought together educators, legislators, and community leaders in York County to address critical issues of student homelessness in the community as well as educational priorities for the upcoming legislative session. The first part of the program was in the Performing Arts Center and that's where a panel, including Carter Friend from the CEO of York County Community Action, as well as Megan Jean Gendron, the Executive Director of York County Shelter Program. She focused on shelter funding, street outreach, support, and mental health services. And there were also presentations on domestic violence and homelessness by Susan Jean Bevalvo of Caring Unlimited. And then also, to show that homelessness affects all ages, there was also Megan Walton of the Southern Maine Agency on Aging was able, that was the first part of the presentation with that. I also, did also include information on behalf of the schools around how we work to support students who are experiencing housing instability. And then, you know, trying to look at developing solutions and helping our legislators before they head up to Augusta for this session to be able to become aware of some of those challenges and how we really got to work together to do our best to leverage all of those resources. The second part of the program, we moved from the Performing Arts Center into the Agora area and that was more of a dine and discuss. That was the second part of the program was really focused on the educational priorities for that. Our culinary program at SRTC did an outstanding job in preparing the meal to be able to do that. And then, various superintendents throughout York County were able to come back and talk about some of those priorities that we look for as people get ready to go up to Augusta. The major theme there is, as we come back and realize that all of our resources are limited, it's so important that everyone is working together to be able to maximize those resources, to have the best impact possible, and to really look at working with the experts and working with people of trying to have those relationships. So I think it worked well overall in terms of doing that. I want to thank our school committee who had attended that evening as well to be able to focus on those information. So, I think the theme here is, we realize that the challenges that we have in Sanford are very similar to challenges that other communities and other school districts are seeing and it's important for us to be able to make sure we are advocating to, at those various levels for that and really taking an active role to be able to be proactive about doing that for it, so. And then, for the people who were not able to attend for our elected officials or legislators, we'll be able to also send them the information that we had to also make sure we're keeping them in the loop as well for it.
I was just going to say that. I think especially the packet that was handed out from the school department would be valuable for your two new members coming in.
Yep.
Especially where it explained, you know, the EPS formula and it just explained it in a way that wasn't complicated and kind of made sense still, so, but it was a wonderful evening and really big kudos to the culinary department and the students over there. They made us a wonderful meal, served it really well, great kids, great instructor. It was a good night.
Yeah, it was their first primetime event and they really knocked it out of the park. So with that, I know they're a little bit nervous for that, but they did outstanding.
Okay, moving on, we have director's reports. Steve Buscic.
Good evening. You guys want to come up to the table? Tonight, we have a team here from Pride Elementary School that are going to talk about the First Ten Grant. The First Ten Grant is a grant that we received from the Department of Education, the main Department of Education last year. It's a three-year grant and we're mid-second year with this grant. Tonight I have with me Susan Inman, the principal over at Pride Elementary School, Shayna Palmer, who's been hired as the outreach staff member who leads this work and provides outreach to the students and families over at Pride, and Jen Mishu, who's the owner and operator of Kids Cove, which is a local childcare center in Sanford. So if we think about First Ten, I'm going to try to not get myself confused here with the computer. When we think about First Ten, First Ten stands for the first 10 years of a child's life as being the most important in terms of development. In First Ten, there are three big ideas with First Ten. The first is that research supports a community-wide approach. The second big idea is that First Ten has a roadmap and the roadmap consists of teaching and learning, partnering with families, and then comprehensive services. First Ten, really, for us, we have a facilitator that works with the team. We meet every three weeks and the facilitator helps us work through a framework that includes strategies to support our families and our students. So this work is methodical and it's really organized. What happened to my slides? Okay, we're going to go, we'll just go with what we have here. So, when we think about students in poverty, across the United States, we have 45% of students in poverty and when we think about Sanford, our percentage of early childcare students is at 55%. When we think about that, what our children need to break that cycle of poverty is they need consistent quality across all settings, they need alignment across the age span, and we need coordination. So what are the barriers to improvement is fragmentation. Our systems are not always aligned. There's barriers in between the education and the health and social services. Sometimes there's duplication of services or services aren't aligned. And then we have the public and the private partnerships. Sometimes what we're doing in private doesn't, what we're doing in the public sector doesn't match what we're doing in the private sector. And so what children experience for this is inconsistent quality, gaps across the age span, and lack of coordination at each developmental stage. And so, First Ten focuses on these early, these first 10 years of life and really focusing on the big transitions, that transition from infant and toddler care into preschool and that transition from preschool into the early elementary grades. First Ten, in Maine, we have many local communities in the state of Maine, there's two cohorts that are leading this work. Some of those communities in Maine consist of East Belfast, Limestone, and the most recent cohort, we have Wiscaske, Skowhegan, Deer Isle, just to name a few. Also, across the United States, there's communities in Pennsylvania, Rhode Island, Alabama, Michigan, all over the country. And one of the good things is this is a network and we learn from each other and we learn beg, we borrow, and we adapt to meet Sanford's needs. So a lot of the things you're hearing about have been done in other communities and then we're adding our own flavor to really meet the needs of our community. And so when we think about First Ten, we have effective schools, strong communities, and healthy communities where all children can learn and thrive. And that's the motto or the mantra of First Ten, creating the conditions where all children can learn and thrive. We have a great partnership. Some of these partners were already at the table, but we've done a great job to expand our partnership. We have Sanford Pride Elementary School, we have the main Department of Education, CDS, York County Head Start, Kids Free to Grow, Kids Cove Childcare and Learning Center, Partners for a Healthy Community, United Way, YMCA, First for Me. These are just some of the partners that are at the table to help us with this work. If we think about our elementary school, we're really their hubs and what we're trying to do is create a hub where the school is where families can come to have their needs met and we can connect them to services. So if we start at the top, we have the families, we have our early childcare centers and Head Start programs, we have family childcare providers, social services, and the health services, connecting all of those spokes on the wheel together. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Susan and Susan is going to get into more of the meat and potatoes of the work that we have done in First Ten. And she's going to talk to you about the kindergarten transition.
Okay, thank you, Steve. I'd first like to say, having this opportunity as a principal to have a program like in my school is a game changer. To have the opportunity to sit with people every three weeks to figure out different ways that we can bring families in, get them ready for school, having Jen on our leadership team and Shayna, it's, it's, it's a game changer and I'm just so pleased that we got this grant and were able to grow with it every year. So our next slide is, all children learn and thrive. Oh, okay, let's skip that. Never mind. Oh, you're going too fast, Steve. There you go. Kindergarten transition process, this is the part of the grant that I've been most active in. How do we look at our kindergarten transition programs in our three elementary schools? What's working and how can the grant strengthen maybe parts of it that are very strong? So, there's four parts here, school, child, school and family, program and school, and school and community. And as Steve mentioned, every three weeks, our meetings are about K-Transition and Play and Learn, which Shayna's going to talk with you about in a little bit. Last year, we worked really hard to get families engaged, connected right away to register their children for kindergarten, not just, here's the paperwork, you know, call us. Really tried to do lots of different things to have them engaged. Hike the kindergarten trail, that's our theme. We stole that from Conestoga Valley in Pennsylvania. They're stealing our stuff too, which is okay. And also, I don't know if anyone will mention, but I will, we've been asked to do a presentation for the network on December 13th about the work that we've been doing as a school. So really excited about that. So we thought about Sanford and all the different trails we have around the community, so that's what we adopted and you'll see the first, second, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth steps, those, the different events we promoted to have parents come in, learn about kindergarten, get them excited, get them registered, and try to call as many kindergartners as we can. And on the left is the book campaign that with the help of Valerie Sullivan, our librarian, our kindergarten teachers, we came up, pre-K, we came up with a list of books and you guys have some of those in front of you tonight. They're kind of all over the city now, which is great. It's cool to see parents or kids recognize the different books. We had a lot of children who came in for kindergarten and said, "Oh, I saw that at my pre-K" or maybe that was at their doctor's office or somewhere. So, again, it's that connection which is really exciting for the children. Joint Professional Learning, here's another piece that is part of the grant. They encourage us to do that. It's that connection with our Head Start, our daycares, private daycares, public daycares, and what can we learn from each other? We did a very informal one last February. We made, we've made a commitment this year to do two. This is a picture that we took from our October Day, it was full day. We had a great turnout. How many people did we have, Shayna?
Sixty-five, I think.
Sixty-five. That's a big group of people, as you can see. Shayna made cookies for us that day, so we were happy. But it just, we took the main early learning standards and started to dissect them and talk about them and say, so what do you see in your daycare center or at Head Start or what do we see in our classrooms? And having those conversations, again, to connect our professional staff with each other. We've also made a commitment to encourage our staff do cross-site visits, to go to Head Start, to go, come into our pre-K classrooms. One of my, one of our teachers at Pride's already gone to do a cross-site visit and she had a great time just going in and looking and having an opportunity to talk with the other teacher at that site was, like I said, a great opportunity. We want to encourage that more for our staff to do. And then we have an upcoming, another one, a joint professional learning opportunity in February, February 5th. We've already got to save the date out and we're going to do some more work on how do we make more connections between the wonderful work that our daycare providers do and that transition to school for kindergarten and pre-K.
So I'm going to talk to you about the next two components of First Ten. So coordinate comprehensive services. And the way that we do that is through the work with our School Connected Plan Learns to deepen our partnerships with community providers outside of the early learning centers that we're trying to do the joint professional learning with, and then creation and distribution of our community resource guide. So what are School Connected Plan Learns? School Connected Plan Learns bring together caregivers, children ages zero to five in our community, and early educators to provide fun, developmentally appropriate activities, caregiver learning, and resources at each of these events. These sessions are one hour long and they run for a series. Six is the amount of time that we've been doing them and it's a really great, I'm lucky enough to be one of the facilitators at all of these plan learns that we've been able to do so far and we've had as little as four months and as old as five years old be there in the room, being able to learn about the basics, learn different activities to be doing with your children, and make connections together with community providers, with other families in the community. It's a lot of isolation is what we're seeing, families and moms mostly, home alone and not really sure what to do. So it's kind of giving that opportunity to bring families in and make those connections with school before they're ever hitting our school doors at four or five years old. Up here, you can see, that's one of our Play and Learn flyers that we put out in the community to try and get families in. The cute little one up there is one of our little learners who's attended two of our different Play and Learn series and she has grown so much in between those two series. It's really cool to see and she has her little leaf catcher from a leaf hunt we went and did. And then those are some emotion puzzles that we, one of our facilitators made for all the families to take home and talk about emotions and do that activity with their children. And then the second, I mean, the last picture there is our Sanford Community Resource Guide. I'm hoping this is not the first time that everyone in this room is seeing this, but really the goal around this was to provide something for the Sanford community that families could go to to find resources that really encompass Sanford and all the small little resources like the church dinner or the playgroup that's happening that you're not going to find if you're looking up on 211 or just really not sure where to start. These are all really thoughtful resources to our community specifically. You have one in your packet tonight, so if you haven't seen it, please scan the QR code, take a peek at it, share it. We've done a lot of work for that. Yes, and it's live, so it's updated anytime I get a note. Anytime I get a notification about a change in resource or I find a new one, I try and go in there and update it. I have a little reminder in my calendar once a month to go in and look through it, so it's constantly being updated. Please use it and share it. See, and then our last component of First 10 is to partner with families. And this third strategy is to deepen partnerships with families and culturally responsive ways to elevate the family voice and to promote our community-wide parenting campaign called the Basics. Some of the ways, oh, you can go back one, sorry, that we've been partnering with families in some of these images. The middle one there is the event that we did, or a few events that we did in partnership with the United Way. They had this idea, they're like, "Let's go to the communities and bring families' resources where they live." So we partnered with Sanford Housing and we set up a table at one of their community, one of their communities in early morning at 7:15 for the bus stop. The United Way was able to provide money for healthy snacks. The kids could take them and get on the bus with them. And we were able to be there with families in that moment, sharing resources, just making those relationships, chatting with them. And they were kind of a captive audience as they waited for their bus stop for their kids. And it was really great and we had families say, "I'm a part of the Head Start Parent Council, you should come to Head Start and present this." Just kind of making those natural connections right then and there that we hadn't made that connection with Head Start. So that was really exciting. And in the lower left, Jen and myself and one of her other staff, Danielle, went to the community baby shower and had a table this fall where we were able to, again, right then and there, share the resources of the Basics and our community resource guide and books with families at that event. And then the top picture is Kids Cove and some Sanford school staff went to a training this summer really about building family partnerships and community partnerships. So we've been trying to really work on this. You can go to the next one now. And then the last part is the Basics. So this is a community parenting campaign and the Basics are five fun, simple, and powerful ways that every family can give every child a strong start. They encompass what most experts say is important for development during those first few years. The Basics are free, they don't require any fancy toys, they don't take any extra time. It's all about helping families learn how to use the time they already have in their spending with their children to make it even stronger. Those principles are maximize love, manage stress, talk, sing, and point, count, group, and compare, explore through movement and play, and read and discuss stories. Oops, I can go to the next one. Here are some of the key scientific facts that make the case for focusing on the youngest children and their caregivers. By age three, a brain reaches 80% of its development for the adult size. As you can see up there in the pictures, look at age two versus an adult versus a newborn. Also, during this period, gaps start to emerge between children from different backgrounds. Developmental skill gaps by race and socioeconomic status are very clear in national data by age two and even before. These gaps appear across cognitive, language, and socio-emotional skills. And the early gaps predict later gaps. Eighty-two percent of children who are prepared for K will master academic skills by age 11, where only 45% of children who are not prepared for kindergarten will reach that milestone. But the good news is, is that the science is clear on what types of experience help to boost brain development in those early years. Go to the next one. The most important input for early brain development and learning and nature of interactions for babies' experiences with their caregivers. Babies and toddlers benefit most from the interactions that are loving and accompanied by physical affection. They are stimulating and engage children in new experiences. They follow and build on children's natural interests and they go back and forth where a caregiver responds promptly and sensitively to children's needs, sounds, expressions, and comments. Community saturation is a big piece of the Basics. The Basics campaign is most effective when the integration is throughout the entire community. Our goal is to saturate the community and surround parents and caregivers so they encounter the basics in the places they already spend time from people and sources they already trust. Each type of institution on this slide, the one back, is a place for sharing the Basics. The vision is sharing the Basics is a routine part of everyone's daily life. Now you can go next. The Basics model includes these three elements that work together. So the first gear is information. The Basics provides free resources on their website, including posters, handouts, flyers in multiple languages. We are currently sharing Sanford Basics flyers, our bookmarks that you guys have tonight, a social media campaign. We have bulletin boards in our schools, all kinds of ways to be sharing that information. The second gear is encouragement and that's where the community saturation piece comes in, where we have trusted members in our community kind of continuing to encourage those same messages that we're giving that information. And then the last one is reminders and that is where the Basics offers a texting service called Basics Insights where families get two text messages per week and it's free for families. It's currently covered the cost under this grant. They get two a week. The first one is a fact that teaches them the science behind one of the Basics principles and why it's important. And the second one on Wednesday is a try this. So it's a game or an activity or a way to read or do one of the Basics principles with your little one and it's specific to their child's age in months. I have them for my little guy, he's three, and the amount of things that I do now that I used to just rush through, like putting his socks on in the morning, I take those extra two seconds and ask him what color they are or do something to engage that piece or when I read him a story at night, it's so much more than just reading a story now. We're picking things out, we're counting, we're doing so much more and he likes that more than he likes the stories most of the time. He just flips to the page where he knows we're going to count. So they're really simple and really effective and I could talk about them for a long time. And then these are just some of the samples of the pieces that we've been trying to put out for information on, the Instagram and Facebook pages that we have called the Basics Sanford. I've become a semi Canva expert trying to make all these things, so please give us a follow and check that out.
So these are, oops. So these are some of our goals for this year, to launch the kindergarten trail, expand the Basics, as Shayna talked about. I mentioned, continue the joint professional learning and continuing to work to strengthen our connections throughout the community with providers. So that's, that's it in a nutshell. I don't know if anyone has any questions or any questions for Jen as being on the leadership team as well.
And I'll just add before we open it up to questions, I think one of the things that I'm really proud of is this team that you see here in front of you. They work tirelessly at this work and it's been a lot of work, but they've worked tirelessly at this. And the other piece is that CJL and MCS, we've tried to incorporate them in this work and so they're involved with the Joint Professional Learning, the High Quality Book Campaign. We've brought them in where we can bring them in to have consistency across our three schools, but Pride is really the team that's doing the heavy lift at this time with that. And then sustainability, as we look at, we've brought on pre-K, that family engagement is so important and it's a piece that as a school department, we needed to do some work in. And I really feel that this grant has done that and for sustainability, we are going to be able to continue this work through our title funding. Family engagement is a big part of title funding and so that is a sustainability of this work with that. So with that, we'll open it up to questions.
I don't have questions, I just wanted to say that I'm super jazzed up that family engagement is finally being like really embraced because it's so important. And I also want to say, man, I wish I had something like this when I was a young, single mom. I'm also an only child, so I was just winging it. And I always say my oldest was my test child. So, but just listening to this presentation, you can really tell like it's a win-win situation for everyone and I hope more parents hear about it and take advantage of it.
I echo what Emily just said. I do have a question because I did see when we went through one of the slides, like well baby checks and sort of the hospital setting, knowing that we don't deliver babies in Sanford anymore, but they typically would go, I think, to Maine Health, to Bitterford, or Maine Med. Have they been, has Maine Health been sort of open? Just because I'm a pediatric nurse, so like those nurses have a lot of time with those new moms and so a lot of education can be done, or at least pamphlets, because when there is a mom that's just feeling really down and lonely and just, you know, like all of those emotions, like sometimes going through, and I don't know if they've been willing to like put some of your information in those, like to go with a, you know, diaper bag, I don't know.
That would be my goal. I would love to see that happen. We haven't been able to quite make that connection. We've sort of been reaching, I think, not the right people to be at that table. I know we've had some attempted outreach. I connected with one of the BHI supervisors trying to make that, but we haven't made the correct connection into the pediatrics or the birthing piece. It is my understanding that the Department of Education and Child Behavioral Health Services for the state are looking to adopt the Basics as a statewide thing, which I think then will help us kind of get that foot in the door and then also more target the Sanford moms who are coming, maybe new moms who might want to join the Play and Learn outside of the Basics is kind of an extension of that, but that would, I would love to see that and I think it's a captive audience to do that.
And, you know, just, I just appreciate the work that you're doing and hope that more and more families come. I don't know how many are attending when you do, because I mean, everything when you start, it's going to be, they're going to trickle in, right? They're going to tell a friend, "Oh, I went to this great thing," you know, blah, blah, blah. And so I can only hope that it will continue to grow just because then, you know, people like yourselves are modeling really good behaviors of parenting, but also discipline because we all, all of us are parents, we know how that just goes hand in hand. So it's sort of like starts it off, right? Because not everybody knows how to discipline. And so I just appreciate all your efforts, which will eventually help us in the head school.
That is the goal, absolutely.
So I actually was writing the same and thoughts of just like, are we thinking the same thing? Are we inviting pediatricians and stuff? I don't know if February is the right forum, obviously, that's collaboration between, but maybe to an event or some sort like that versus, so that can trickle in. But this is awesome. I, you know, exactly what Emily was saying, the trail to kindergarten. I mean, I think my kids went to screening the day before we started, so that's amazing. And yeah, this little, you know, sign up ticket little, you know, this is incredible. Good job, good job, good job.
I agree. I mean, I echo everything that everybody said and I think every time that I hear a report about what's going on, I think about how much I would have appreciated little texts giving me ideas when I was sitting around, because I've got five and they're all very close in age, so it would have been great to just have somebody give me another idea of how to survive the day. But it's, I just want to say too that it's so obvious that you're so passionate and that you care about what you're doing and just thank you very much. That's amazing.
Thank you. And I would echo, I think Susan's word hit, a game changer. When you start looking at this, this is in so important work, but we're going to see the benefits of this work in so many different ways with that. So I know it's been a lot of work, I know it's hard, I know it's a huge commitment, but thank you because it is a game changer. It's going to be a game changer to be able to do that, so well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have one more thing on my report really quickly. The Safety Committee, we did meet this afternoon. Recently, Maine School Management Association, they came down, they're our workers' compensation insurance carrier. They came down and they reviewed, they walked through all of our schools. Overall, they were impressed with our facilities, impressed with what they saw. They did give us some recommendations, which I've shared those recommendations with staff through the monthly newsletter, safety newsletter that went out today and we'll be following up on that. The good news is our Workman's Comp, we're ending the calendar year, our Workman's Compensation rate for this year is much improved from the previous year. The unfortunate piece is it's a three-year average and so we have a really high year in there, so we're working on to bring that down, but the work the Safety Committee is doing is paying off, so that's all I have for you tonight.
Okay, next we will be hearing from Zach Lemlin.
Good evening. Thank you guys for having me. I'm going to back that up, talk too loud anyways. So as we get started, I wanted to do our fall wrap-up. So the, as we started the fall or wrapped up the fall, a couple of thank yous to the people who made the fall sports season a success behind the scenes, our custodians, our maintenance department. As you guys can imagine, having 250-plus kids six days a week from August into November, huge, huge thank you to them. They took on the mowing this year, that was a huge task and I appreciated that, they did a terrific job. You know, and that goes to the Parks and Rec Department as well because they helped to fill in on some times where we couldn't quite get it done through the maintenance department, they just didn't have enough hands. They stepped up to do that, they still did our lining and they did an incredible job. Brian DeRogers and his staff over there were amazing. It seemed like I could text at any time like, "Hey, field hockey actually is going up to the grass this week, can you get up there and do that?" And he had no problem with doing some of those things. Huge thank you to the Red and White Foundation. I think that they probably fed thousands of people this fall, it seems. At any number of our fall football games or soccer games or whatever it was, they were open, rain or shine, and eating hot dogs. I probably had more hot dogs this year than I needed to, but I can't turn down a good steamed hot dog. And then lastly, the middle school sports, our numbers are hopefully going to come back. It was a little bit of a down year for some of those sports, but Josh Allen, some of the middle school teachers are doing a really great job of trying to promote as best as we can multi-sport athletes because we noticed that kids are earlier and earlier and earlier are focusing on one single sport, trying to get them to enjoy all those aspects of it and, you know, start to specialize maybe as they get a little bit later. But as Sarah heads to that first slide, you can see some of the numbers and things that from our, our fall team, our cross-country team qualified for the regional tournament and then they went and had one individual qualifier. They were the sportsmanship award recipients, which was pretty awesome to have those kids up there doing that. Our field hockey team had a terrific season. They unfortunately lost in the quarterfinals versus TA. I probably couldn't say it, but I don't know. I think that's the first time we've hosted a quarterfinal game in at least 10 years, if not longer, so it was a terrific season, very, very proud of them. Awards are still coming in for some of our student athletes on that team, so proud of them for that. And then our girls soccer team lost in the prelims at Candy Munk, probably as a guy who's starting to learn soccer, as a football guy, one of the most amazing games I think I ever watched. I think I could probably think it was 4.3 seconds left in the second period to score to send that to overtime and then tied in double OT and went to PKs. Pretty, pretty exciting stuff to watch. Wish we were on the other side of it, but you know, sometimes how the cookie crumbles there. Very proud of our student athletes for, 42 all-academic student athletes this fall was incredible. 23 all-conference student athletes, very, very cool that we are well-represented across the board and across the league with some of the talents that we have. And we had our fall awards night on the 12th of November, was a great night. It was awesome recognition for our coaches, our student athletes, very well-attended by parents. I think that we do a really nice job of making that an opportunity to put a positive note on the last little bit of the season there. As we head into the winter year, here's where things are looking for the year. I was, I was very happy, the number that I put there at the bottom, 161 student athletes have come out, grades nine through 12 this year. We were 145 last year, so I'm very happy that that continues to tick up. The major number that you'll see, and as I had made these before vacation, these numbers have even gone up a little bit, we're pushing closer to 60 on our indoor, excuse me, on our indoor track team, so I'm very happy that that keeps going the right way. You know, as long as it doesn't snow, those kids will continue to be outside and freezing their butts off at times, but making use of all the facilities we have, we're beyond fortunate to have as big of a school and as nice of a school we are with two gyms that we can satisfy, as many kids that want to participate in that. Very excited about where our numbers are. Things look very good at the high school, excited for the seasons as we get ready to get tipped off here at the end of this week. Down at the middle school, we were able to support two boys' basketball teams, two girls' basketball teams, and a full cheerleading team. We will have wrestling and volleyball that'll start in winter too, so that's not quite there yet, but we're very excited about what those numbers look like. And I know middle school basketball started games tonight and I'd be curious to see how those did against Bitterford today. So as we get started with the winter, like I said, we're up 25, about 25 student athletes from last year for the indoor track team. The energy and the excitement in- and the excitement in the building right now for winter sports is awesome. It is that change that the fall comes, you're kind of like, "All right, I could use a breath of fresh air." And, and the winter sports coaches and, and student athletes come in. And it's a, not a lot of different kids, but it's a whole new energy and it's a really fun place to be right now. And then as we're going to look at some of these major events, very excited about some of the major events that we're going to have this fall. One of the first ones that we had was meet the coaches. Last week, we had, numbers were down a little bit. I think people are probably tired of listening to me. But it's great to have parents come in, have an opportunity to meet, you know, the coach who's going to be with their son or daughter for the next 13 weeks, be able to ask questions, get on the Remind app, Google Classroom, things that you need for the season. We try to really make that an informative meeting. And then some of the things that we're going to host, we have the SMA Leadership Summit. That's this week. Very excited to host all 17 schools for the SMA. They're going to bring 10, 10 student athletes apiece from each school. So we're going to have, you know, 170 students walk in the halls of Sanford High School on Wednesday between the Performing Arts Center, the competition gym, and the practice gym. We have three very, very great keynote speakers that I think all student athletes are going to be really fortunate to hear from. One of them is Chandler Fenner. He was a Super Bowl champion with the Seattle Seahawks. So he's coming, he's going to show off his Super Bowl trophy, excuse me, his Super Bowl rings. I know some of the kids are pretty excited about that, to, to have that, along with a man by the name of Andrew Marata, who I heard last year speak at one of our athletic director conferences. He has an amazing message, and I, I think that that's going to really bode well with what the kids are going to hear, and I hope create a positive experience for them. We have our opening night for winter sports on Friday, the 6th. Thursday's really the opening day, but most basketball teams will start on Friday. And carnival wrestling meets will start next week. So things are off and running. I know track will be, I think, until mid-December, a couple more weeks for, for track to start. But it really kicks off this week. January 3rd and 4th, we have the SWAT. So if any of you guys want to make a crock pot or come on down, we'll be there all, all weekend, it seems. But always, always a terrific time where I think we're going to push 23 teams this year for that. So it'll be a lot of wrestling. We use both gyms, five mats. It's, I know another athletic director had shared with me that they consider that to be one of the top wrestling tournaments in all of New England. So very excited to once again be hosting that. And we're looking for data as to what that is. But I think we're pushing somewheres in the ballpark of this is the 50th year. We're just over that. So it's pretty crazy. And we're trying to secure what that number actually is. January 25th, we're going to host the SMA cheering competition. We thought it'd been rotated around, but the league felt that Sanford High School was the best spot to host that. So here we are coming back to Sanford. Very, very excited to ha, to have that, as unfortunately you don't get to host a lot of cheering competitions. So if we can host it, I'd love to have it. On January 28th, we're going to have a boys' and girls' doubleheader versus Noble. I think that should be a terrific opportunity for anyone in the community. Come see some great basketball. Really excited about that night and, and should be a terrific game. And then we're hosting the dual-state wrestling championship on February 1st. That is a super, super cool experience that I got to, to go and check out for the last, for the first time last year. It'll be the top four teams in the state of Maine in Class A will come and wrestle essentially head-to-head, and then crown them as, as a state championship from there. And fingers crossed, we'll, we'll be in the running for that come February 1st. But busy winter for, for the Sanford Athletic Department and for our student athletes. And we're kicking it all off this week. As we head into another big event that we just had was the Sanford Athletics Hall of Honor. We just inducted our first class this past Saturday. It was an incredible experience. It was awesome. We had about 175 people who had come to, to see our nine inductees. It was, it was an awesome, awesome, awesome time. I, I think that everyone who came and had witnessed it really enjoyed the experience. Very proud and happy with the, you know, the committee and the wealth of knowledge, the dedication from our community or to our community. It was really awesome. There's, there's a photo of our, our seven living inductees being inducted underneath the new sign that's been hung. If you go to the next one, you'll see all, all nine names. It was incredible. I, I was a little nervous. I wasn't sure if all representatives would make it, but we did have everyone. Everyone spoke very well. It was great to, to kind of catch up with everybody and kind of have the who's who. We had, that credit right there to, to the sign was made by Gary Burpee with Burpee Signs here in town. It was amazing. He had this kind of vision and thought that what he wanted, and, and he made that happen. It looks incredible in the athletics wing across from the trophy case. So very excited about what that end of the school is starting to kind of no longer just be blocks and brick and, and starting to have a little character to it down there. Following the event, we had about 150 people, I would say, that went over to the Elks Lodge, and we had a, a reception there after, for, for about two hours. Very well-attended. It was great to get kind of the who's who of, of our community in one building. And I think the stories probably could have gone all night if, if there was no one to kick us out. It was a fantastic evening. And, and the last slide that I had up there was a huge thank you to our student leaders. These are some of the Fall Leadership Council student athletes that had come and volunteered to be student ushers and help get people in their seats, pass our programs, direct people to the bathrooms. And they stayed and watched and, and hopefully learned a little bit of history about, you know, the school that they attend and people who've gone before them. So all in all, I would say the Hall of Honor was a tremendous success. I look forward to next year and, and those nominations will, will start coming in hopefully on January 1st and, and look forward to, you know, a whole nother round of now having our feet underneath us and figuring out the next stage of it. The last couple of things for the winner for the athletic department are kind of the same old. You know, we have our, we have our apps. We will be streaming everything that's in the competition gym, whether it's a first-team basketball game, whether it's a cheering competition, we'll, we'll stream any of that stuff on WSSR-TV. We have the R-School app. So if you ever need to find directions to a place, schedule, you know, records, any of that stuff, that's all up there. We continue to use the, our Sanford Athletics on Instagram, put out game day graphics, do anything, share posts and things like that. So that's kind of the extent of the apps and what we have there. And then the last thing is just to, we continue to do Leadership Council on Wednesdays. One of my favorite things that we get a chance to do, I think it, you know, numbers will be down a little bit this winter because the teams are a little bit smaller, but I always look forward to that because it, it gets to be having a little bit more intimate conversations with some of those student athletes who are a little bit more willing to share their thoughts or concerns about what's going on. You know, we'll start that this Wednesday, following the Leadership Summit. So it'll be a busy, busy day, but, but that's, I don't know if I'd have it any other way. So that's where things are from the fall wrap-up as we head into the winter. And I would like to welcome any of you guys to come to any of the events we have and come get a popcorn and a hot dog and watch some great sports.
Can I just say thank you for all the work that you do and just making all of this happen?
Yeah.
It's wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, that, congra, you know, congratulations on such, such a successful Hall of Honor event. And hopefully it'll get bigger and bigger, but it was a success. I mean, 175 people came into Sanford. A lot of those alumni had not been in the new building and were just in awe of it. Really great stories. I mean, it, it was just great and a great for the students. I just hope in the future, maybe more students come and just get to hear, you know, just their athletic stories, but it's also just their life as well. It was just, it was an amazing night. So.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, something that I thought that was extra special is that to go around and hear all of the inductees talk about how they hadn't seen each other in a while, and it was so great to, everybody to get together. And afterwards at the Elks, just to see how everybody, the community came together. It was just really wonderful. Thank you to you. Thank you to you. Thank you to everybody.
And just to add on that, I think what I loved hearing, I wasn't able to say for the entire thing because of the event, but just that, you know, the inductees all like were thanking their teammates, because obviously no one wins a game alone. And so the cheering on of the teammates and everybody has like a purpose on a team. It, it just was, was great to hear.
Yeah, well done.
Thank you.
Well done, Zach and company. And the themes that I took away from that were such a theme of community and roots, were, were themes that people were talking about that I think really resonated when you look at, you know, the event and the, the people that were being honored with that and how important Sanford is central to that. I thought that was really well done. So, and I, also looking forward to Wednesday as well with the Student Athlete Summit. How many years have we done that now?
Um, I know, I've, know I've done it all three as the athletic director. I know there was COVID the year before that. So I want to say we've hosted at Sanford High School fi, I would say at least five, if not more than that. I know they keep talking about wanting to take it to St. Joe's or take it to another school. And very quickly goes, "Yeah, but Sanford just, they, it goes so well there. Why would we move?" And.
That's what I was going to say. I, I ran into a, a former athletic director at St. Joseph's College, and he was talking about how he's looking forward to coming down Wednesday. And just to hear his, his passion and talking about the facility gave me a tremendous amount of pride for us to be able to come back and do that. So kudos for that. That's, that's another feather in the cap for Sanford. So good.
Absolutely.
Seems to be a theme for a lot of the athletics that you host it so well that they decide they want to come back. And I do also want to mention how many late nights after soccer games I see you out there locking everything up. So, you know, the hours that you put in are, are noticed. So thanks for that.
Now you can get home, get some rest.
Yeah. I might be able to tuck my son in.
Thanks, Zach.
Okay, next we will be hearing from Beth Lambert.
Why am I always the one to follow these really good presentations? I want to go first next time. So, thank you. So my presentation is very quick tonight. Just a couple of updates. I'm going to start with my curriculum committee meeting. We met on November 19th last Tuesday. The committee just, we had three areas of focus for this particular meeting. The first one, the committee reviewed the universal screener. This is used in our elementary schools, and it's just a quick screener that the teachers do to help support students who might need extra social and emotional support. We kind of, it kind of shared what that is, what it looks like and how it is used. And more will be discussed on it on, during the December 16th workshop with the counselors and social workers. So we're going to follow up with some questions that came up during that initial meeting. And then we'll continue that work. We also dug into my budget. I shared my five-year curriculum budget with the committee. And we sort of, kind of went through my plans. We reviewed the numbers and I answered any question they had, so they could see where my, my plans were going and how I've made sure to organize all of my renewals so that nothing overlaps. So, and then the other topic that we discussed, which kind of falls into the other piece of my presentation, which is the NWEA fall testing. The window closed on October 25th. And the fall desk, the fall data, that testing data, it's our starting point for the school year. Kind of helps us meet our growth goals and grade level goals for the spring. So it gives us our starting point. It gives us information about where our students are struggling, where our students are exceeding, and different places that we can help create interventions or enriching activities. So with those scores being available now, I created a protocol that was shared with building administrators during our A-Team meeting a couple of weeks ago. So they're going to use that protocol with their building teams to review the data at the building level, at the grade levels, at classroom levels, and they can even dig down into individual student data as well for the classroom teachers. And we use that. We're looking for trends. We're looking for, it's amazing what data can tell you. And so it was just kind of a, a process for everybody to kind of go through and look at it from big picture all the way down into the, the tiny pictures of individual students. And then from the central office perspective, I look at building data, but I also like to look at it across years. I like to follow the data trends for cohorts to see how we line up each fall. So that's my next step with that data. And then our winter testing window opens on January 6th and it closes on Happy Valentine's Day, February 14th. And so that's my update for tonight. Any questions? No? Okay.
Sorry.
Good job.
I was waiting for Paula. She was deep in thought. So, all right, thank you.
I was writing down the window.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to new business and Cheryl Fournier.
I know you love them. Good evening. I am here to talk about October financials. Currently, we are at, running about $890,000 below budget. That's due to the one payroll. And I actually went back to look at this to double-check and make sure this is true. Last year, our salaries were running at 18% of budget. This year, I mean, last year it was at 21%. This year it's at 18%. So if you take 3% of the salary budget, we come out at $860,000. So that's why we're running $890,000 below budget. So I went to go prove that because I was like, it's such a big number. I wanted to make sure that we had, that I double-checked to make sure my gut feeling was exactly what it was. So I wanted to prove that. So I wanted to talk about that. We're running, so we're running under last year's budget by about $448,000 year-to-date, which a lot of that is our payroll. If you go to look at the revenue, we're running about $587,000 above last year. And that is mostly due to the EPS formula or the ED79 subsidy amount. Because as of October, we haven't brought any tuition in or anything like that, or very little. So federal grants currently, we're at revenue of $387,000 and expenses of $533,000. We always run a little, little behind at the beginning of the year because we can't bill until the performance reports are done. And so those are a lot of been, being done over the past month, so that we'll start to get caught up on billing. Underpriced fund, we're running about $543,000 for revenue and expenses of $704,000. And that's due to nutrition. We're always running one month behind because we pay it out, then they give it to us the following month. Esser, so we have $977,000 in revenue and $372,000 in expense. That is done. This is the last. I don't think we have any other expenses, maybe a small one that hit November. So we are totally billed. We are done. And we spent all of it but $3,000. So other funds, we're at revenue of $15,000 and expenses of $63,000. And that's just waiting for reimbursements. So if we go to the next section, Article One, which is all your regular instruction, that's running about $531,000 below budget and $343,000 below last year. And that's due to mostly salaries, because that's where most of our people, between that and special ed, which is the next one, are located. So special ed, we're running about $239,000 below budget. And we're slightly up from last year, which is kind of, didn't quite expect that, but I think it's mostly we are close to fully staffed, which is nice. Article Three, which is your career and technical, which is all of our SRTC, we are running about $59,000 below budget and we're about, almost same as last year. And most of their budget is more not just salaries, because they have a lot of supplies that get purchased at the beginning of the year. Article Four, we're running about $15,000 below budget. That's on a 14, on a $1.4 million budget. So I'm not really concerned there. We're running ready, the same as last year. That's, a lot of it is athletics. So we're running similar to last year. Article Five, we're running about $49,000 below budget and $39,000 below from last year. Timing of things getting purchased and stuff like that, that's a lot of curriculum supplies, IT supplies, licenses, stuff like that that we pay at the beginning of the school year. Article Six, we're running about $34,000 below budget and about $7,000 below last year. That's our system administration. That's mostly us. And then school administration, Article Seven, they're running right about, close to budget at $7,000 and slightly above last year. And everything looks good with that. No changes because we had three payrolls, both are ready for this year. It's different than the teachers' because they get paid on a July through June. And so it doesn't show the extra payroll like it does on the other ones. like it does on the other ones. Article Eight, $26,000 below budget and $62,000 above last year. That's mostly due to they were behind on billing us last year. I feel like last year should have been closer to what we have this year. So I feel that we're fine there. They did a lot of catch-up towards November, December last year. Article Nine, we're running significantly below budget. A lot of that is due to timing of things we purchased last year because we purchased some big items at the beginning of school year last year. And this year we're not doing as much of that. Plus we haven't had as many breakdowns, which is good, especially at the beginning of the heating system. So knock on wood, please. It's funny because I had that in my notes to tell you to do that because things look really good. We have some couple of service contracts we haven't paid yet because we're talking to them about some, what we actually want them to do. So there may be some changes a little bit in the amounts that we pay. So that's why some of those are a little bit behind. Article Ten, which is our debt, I mean, that one's pretty easy. We're $18,000 below budget, but really I would say we're really at budget because it just is a timing difference from last year because it's a number of interest, the amount of interest that we pay is really the only difference. Article Eleven, of course, which is PAC and WSSR-TV. I wanted to say that backwards. So that's right at budget, similar to last year. So not any concerns there. Adult education is running slightly below from last year, $13,000 and $5,000 compared to last year. Everything seems to be going well in there. And that is my report. And when you want, if you wanted to understand that 18%, if you go to the very last page, it's that very first line on the, on that page, it says we have, we're at 82%, which is actually 18% we've spent so far compared to the 21% last year. So that, that's how I go double check that number. See, the very first one says 82%.
Yep.
So the 18% of our budget had been spent on that day at the end of October.
I'm just wondering, you know, when you compare to last year, knowing that we had a lot of ESER positions last year that are no, not in this budget, is that sort of where we're seeing the difference?
ESER was a different fund.
Okay.
The reports that we go over are just the general fund.
Okay. But just, does that include like the insurance that we were paying for the ESER fund, staff?
Um, no, because we would budget, we budgeted for those positions to move into the general fund.
Okay.
So we would have similar to that.
Okay.
But that could be a little bit of why it would skew it a little bit too. But I did at least, you know, by doing that percentage, double checking that the 3% change came out to close to the amount we're off, I was like, that made me know that it's definitely that extra payroll.
Thank you.
We're just not spending it quite as quickly this year.
Yeah, some of, some of the pieces, yeah.
18% versus 21. So we're just slowly trying to hold back as much as we can.
Yeah, January has our first three month, three payroll month for teachers and ed techs, which last year was September. So the, the move, it kind of skews things.
And I, and I think the other thing, you mentioned it Cheryl too, is this year we're in a better position staffing-wise than we have been previously. And so I think that's also going to be an impact on the numbers as well.
Yeah, knock on wood. I think custodial is fully staffed right now. I don't know if this is wood.
The whole time that you're up here, we're just going to be knocking on wood.
Exactly.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the October 2024 financials as presented.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
All in favor. Contract extensions for superintendents.
I make a recommendation to approve a one-year contract extension through the 2027, 2028 school year.
I will second that.
Thank you. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Thanks for staying another year, Matt.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Thank you for being there. I just have one more quick thing, just on that, kind of. This ended up at my house and I wanted to present this to Matt.
This is new business, but that's okay.
And it's even, it's even tinier upon that camera up there. But this belongs in his, his office or the administration office. Here you are.
Now what is it? Would you like to remind the audience that is what it is?
This was from the lip sync battle that we, you know, we won over the, the city council that night. It was a lot of fun and Matt was one of our lead roles, if not the lead role. So thank you for that.
Our own Sanford Zach Efron, ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah, it does. Yeah, there, there it is. Well, yeah, I wasn't, thank you. We had a good team. I'll put it that way. Someone mentioned earlier teammates, focus on teammates. The focus was definitely on the teammates in that aspect. Thank you.
Moving on, no old business, resignations and retirements.
Yes, I try to not be, my face isn't red now as I can come back to, from the embarrassment. A couple of things to announce. Resignations, Tasha Baker, ed tech one over at Carl J. Lamb. Then we have a couple of appointments. Flex shift custodian down at the high school, Tyler Longmore. And then some kitchen personnel, one at CGL, one MCS, Maria Parent, Sylvia Moore. We do have some Schedule B, Schedule Ski and Schedule D appointments. Paul Nolett, Assistant Boys varsity basketball coach, Sean Rowe, Assistant Indoor Track Coach, Megan Kiley, Assistant Indoor Track Coach, Zach McMurtry, First Team Boys Basketball Coach, James Canterra, Eighth Grade Girls Basketball Coach, Samantha Lynn, Art Club Co-Advisor, Joshua Hisong, Jazz Band over at the middle school, Stephanie Buzzino, one of our senior class advisors, and then Heather English and Liz White as National Honor Society Co-Advisors. Couple transfers to announce. Courtney Perez, increasing her hours in the kitchen at CGL. Gilbert Emmons is moving from her first shift custodian at the high school and SRTC to a substitute position. Ashley Mulcahy is in the kitchen personnel, increasing her hours over at MCS. Sorry about that. And then Karen Jalbert also increasing her hours at Carl J. Lamb. And Celeste Broad moving from our substitute over to be the nurse administrative assistant to fill that opening at Sanford Middle School.
Okay, thank you. Policies and procedures.
Okay, the following policies will be presented for our first readings, reading. Policy CF, School Building Administration. Updated Policy CF, School Building Administration clarifies the principal's role detailing specific responsibilities in the areas like instructional leadership, staff collaboration and school management. Unlike the old policy, it provides a comprehensive framework for the principal's duties, including curriculum development, teacher supervision and student discipline. Policy DB, the Annual Operating Budget. The Annual Operating Budget Policy DB has been updated to reflect changes in the city charter, replacing the town meeting format with the city council as the body that approves the school committee budget. And additionally, the legal references have been added to that policy. Policy DBD, Budget Planning, same thing with that policy, has been adjusted to reflect the change in town charter, replacing the town meeting with the city council. And the final policy for first reading is Policy DBG, Budget Hearings and Adoption Process. Policy DBG Budget, Budget Hearings and Adoption Process has been updated to reflect the changes in the city charter. Additionally, a new policy includes language specifying that only amounts pertaining to operating expenses, reserve or contingency funds or capital outlay expenditures are approved by voters and the legal references have been updated. And thank you to Cheryl Fournier for providing guidance on those three policies. And my recommendation is to approve the first reading.
Sure. I make your recommendation to accept the first reading of Policies CF, DB, DBD and DBG as presented.
Anybody want to second it? I'll second it. I would like to second it since I never get to do it. Any discussion? All in favor?
All in favor.
The following procedures will, the following policies will be presented for a second reading. Policy IJNBD, Student Device and Internet Use. The updated policy now includes provision for educating students on safe online behavior, covering topics such as social media interactions, the risk of hacking and awareness of sexting and cyberbullying. The superintendent or their designee is tasked with incorporating age-appropriate internet safety and digital citizenship training into the curriculum as well as documenting this training. Initially, the legal references have been updated in that policy. The next one is a procedure, Procedure IJND-R, Student Device and Internet Use Procedures. The updated procedure outlines the consequences for violating computer use rules, including potential removal, removal of privileges and disciplinary action. It emphasizes that students have no expectation of privacy when using school computers and introduces new detailed rules for school-issued devices, covering proper use, parental responsibility and consequences for misuse. There's also been some other minor language changes in the document that don't impact the intent. Procedure GCSA-R, Employee Computer and Internet Use Procedures. The updated procedure outlines new restrictions regarding software installation and copying, emphasizing that all downloads must be approved by the system administrator to avoid any illegal penalties and clarifies that employees have no expectation of privacy when using school-owned devices. And additionally, there has been some language added in there in terms of the school department's rights to supervision of the devices. And my recommendation is to accept the second reading of those policies.
I make a motion to accept the second reading of Policies IJNBD, INJBD-R and GCSA-R as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion?
Yes, I would just like to add or to ask, the employee computer and internet use procedures. Well, these, I know that we're just doing a second reading in the next meeting. We would vote to approve or not. Staff would be aware of these changes.
Yeah.
So there's no sort of like, oh, I didn't know. It would be definitely.
They're, they're well aware. Yep. And we'll, we'll update them on the new policy when it comes out as well.
Okay, thank you.
And this is a second reading.
Emily, did you have anything?
I just wanted to say that, you know, the cell phone prob, device and internet use policy, we, you know, we did spend some time and we are fully, we're going to back our admin teams and our principals and, and we are, you know, fully supportive of them and their decision-making as they navigate using that policy.
Yes. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
All in favor.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, items for future agenda. Amy, you have something?
Um, I, I would like for, for agendas, knowing that we have a busy season ahead of us with budget and, and whatnot.
Sorry. I would like to, just knowing that we have a busy season coming ahead with budget and those meetings, but also would like for us in the future to talk more about a policy, creating a policy that definitely I've been seeing throughout hospitals, different hospitals, about how staff will be treated by the patients while they're in the building and that, you know, what will not be tolerated. And so I do feel like that is something that we should be discussing, just given the culture and the climate of the world and just that our school staff should not have to tolerate bullying from anyone, but in particular the other adults. And I just think we need to have stronger guidelines as to that we are, it is unacceptable to talk to staff in this way and have it lined out. So I would, I'd like to talk about that because other businesses are doing that. Restaurants are actually doing that about waitstaff. Hospitals are doing about, about all their personnel. So I do think it's time for us to take a stand that our staff deserve to be treated fairly and with respect.
Yeah, we can, we can look into that. Would you like to work that through the policy committee initially?
Um, yeah, I guess. And then, I'm not part of the policy committee. So when you plan on it, I'll like to attend.
Yep.
That's, I, I agree with that, you know, wholeheartedly. That's a good topic to bring up and to make sure we do have policy around that. Staff to staff, students to staff. I mean, I think we really, we've got to get back to taking care of our, our teachers and our employees.
Yep, absolutely. Okay, moving forward, calendar announcements.
Sure. So as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, our next meeting here for the school committee will be a workshop. That's going to be held on Monday, December 16th down at the high school and SRTC. The focus of that will be school counseling, social work outreach and Section C policies with that. I've got that, we were looking at maybe a change of time with that. My schedule now works for three o'clock. So we can keep it at three o'clock if that's what people are looking for. I don't know if, we talked about moving that earlier, if that's still interested. I know the, the, the meeting I had on that day at four o'clock has been rescheduled. So do we want to keep it at three or move the time up?
I would appreciate moving it up just because I have some games at 2:30, but I'm just one person, so I can always leave early.
So.
I can meet as early as noon, but not any, any earlier than that.
Okay. So I think we'll look at 2:30 to have our people there. So 2:30 on December 16th for that. We also, there's also going to be a joint school committee and city council workshop on Wednesdays, December 11th. That will be right here in the chambers and that's starting at 5:30 and on December 11th. Policy Committee also on December 16th as well. And then we'll be heading into the holidays. And then we'll be back with our first school committee meeting on Monday, December, January 6th and a curriculum committee meeting on Tuesday, January 7th. Those are the upcoming announcements.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to adjournment, recommendation to adjourn this meeting at 7:50.
Emily, do you want to make that?
I'll make a recommendation to adjourn.
I think you should second it also.
No.
I will second it.
Okay. And that's it? All in favor?
All in favor?